Money in it, big money in it. So when you see Pritzker pushing education that is of that nature, you have to understand it's about the money, you know? And it's evil, it's sick, you know? I talked about ignorance, you know, I say there's two types of ignorance. The ignorant lacking knowledge, didn't know better. I didn't know, I'm sorry. Then there's the ignorance that I do know, but I continue down a path that is perhaps immoral, morally wrong. So, you know, everybody's lives eternal realm is at stake in this room one day. The things and decisions you make as this board have eternal ramifications. So I care about you people. I want you to know that, every one of you, I care about you. I'm not threatening. I was accused of that. I'm not a threatening guy. Sometimes I get, I have a place for a real righteous indignation, which often raises my voice, might even be considered righteous anger. Yep, thank you. So I just hope you guys understand what's coming down the pipe and how important your decisions are. And the Department of Education today is truly the Department of Education, indoctrination, sexualization, and godlessness. That's who your bosses truly are. And that's what they're working on. Keep that in mind in the decision you make. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, thank you. We are now good to go on YouTube. So for those of you who are viewing tonight, thank you for your patience and welcome. We are just wrapping up communication from visitors and moving into reports, building reports and board communication. So we'll start with, we'll start on that side, Justin.
Okay.
Start with Justin with board communication and make our way around.
Okay. All I wanted to say tonight is I've been thrilled this summer with seeing like our teachers and our staff and our administration, not in our community. For example, our kids' softball games, baseball games, the Seymour Parade, just the love that our teachers and administrations are pouring into our kids when they see them out in the community. It's been really exciting. I mean, it just reaffirms that we have such a great school district. And I just thank everyone for pouring into our kids because I know that all the teachers and staff and administration love our kids as much as we do. So I hope everyone's having a good summer and continue to enjoy the rest of the summer. At the last.
Thank you.
I don't have a lot to add, but it was very cool to see Blake get drafted to the Royals in the second round for Big. That was pretty cool. My boys and I were excited to see that. Just really made you feel proud that you came from our school, that talent did. Yeah, I don't have anything to say.
I'll just say it was in five a couple minutes ago that our losses is the US Department of Education. I feel real strongly and I don't belong in the living room trying to speak for the board very often anymore, but I feel real strongly that our losses are the taxpayers and citizens in Mohammed. And I think most of you all did, not all of you. I want to make that real clear. But I appreciate the comments and input. We're in the middle, we're in the middle, we're the whole summer in the middle of summer. I know we're trying to finish up things from last year, busily put things in place for fall. Appreciate all our staff that's working hard still over the summer. Some time for some trips and some breaks, a little bit of recreational activity, but a lot of hard work keeps going on, a lot of deadlines keep being there. Appreciate all of our staff that is still working hard. I echo what Jordan said earlier, it's good to see we're already in bus drivers. That's a bus driver. And so they're tired, that's great news. So good work, everybody.
Nothing to share tonight?
Ditto. No, I, yeah, it's the middle of July, summer flies by. Every year it goes by faster and faster. I was just telling them all of a sudden, just you blink and it's, I'm gonna start school again. But like Justin said, when I went to the Seymour Parade, my heart just felt, I love that little hometown parade. You've just, you've got to go if you haven't been there. It's amazing. You see that the community really come together and other communities as well. You see the teachers, the students, just everybody is happy. Everybody's on the same page. The few times I've been able to get out to Lake of the Woods and have a walk. In fact, last time I was walking and all of a sudden I, these kids start coming behind me and it's the cross-country team. And I'm like, okay, and then boom, that was another 15. And then another one, and then here comes the coaches. And it was just so, they were all just happy running. And I was just like, you know what, this is so cool, you know? And in the mornings when I walk early, there's, you know, I see the music hall out there. And it's just, I, it's really cool to be part of that type of community and pumped about Blake. Amazing kid, amazing family. You could not have asked for a better kid to have that opportunity. And first off, buying our royal blue. And then I was thinking too, I think Ava Boyd is going to Nationals in Oregon in the 800 maybe in the mile. So just excited, a lot of fun things going on. Yeah.
I also have not much to add. I just wanted to share a story that, you know, as teachers, we kind of get this reputation that we have summers off. And I was out walking my dog the other night, ran into another teacher walking their dogs and immediately started talking about reading instruction and what he's doing with the new reading guidelines. And we started talking about reading podcasts and letters trainings and all these things that we are doing during our summers. And it just reminded me, kind of like what Max was saying, that even though you may not see teachers in the building, the teachers' brain cells are always on it. They are always firing and thinking, okay, what am I going to do better next year? How am I going to make a bigger difference next year? So kudos to all those educators. So thank you.
Okay, financial update, Heather. Oh, well, we saw it in the board packet. Does anybody have questions for Heather?
I'd like for her to do my budget because she, we like over-collected and underspent. So who knows?
We over-collected mainly because of interest. And so we overspent in a couple funds, TARP fund, just because there was some extra expenses, like the phone system. And transportation fund basically was because the salaries were greater than what I had budgeted. The reason we didn't see that in the education and O M fund is because the ESSR that we did not spend basically covered those extra salaries.
Do you want to talk about ESSR is for the?
I'm sorry. ESSR is the CARES Act. It's the money that we receive based on COVID. So we have that grant through the next year. So we will, there, you know, a lot of like front 20, you know, things that were budgeted were like the control project, you know? And I just, I budgeted it all, what I expect, you know, that could happen. Just that way I didn't come under.
Any other questions?
Good to be under budget.
Yes.
A lot of you were saying it was always a nail biter. And now we just sit here and expect to be there, so that's good.
Dr. Bagley, do you have any?
Nothing additional.
Any questions or comments? Other than welcome and budgeting. You're settling in well.
I take the referrals right out of the word.
Questions? Uh, Dr. Lee?
Yes, we will, just a reminder, we'll have alignment with Policy Board colon 10. We'll have 10 to budget in our meeting, our first meeting in August. That is TBD right now. Just trying to line something up with Jim Burdette. But when we do get together, we'll have that. And then that will give us the 30 days in between adoption and shutdown.
Okay, all right, moving on to unfinished business listening session. Before we jump into kind of what the overall themes that we've noticed are, I wanted to clarify for our Saturday virtual session. We have been running our listening sessions like regular meetings because we want to have as many board members there as possible. And according to open meetings, that if we have three or more board members there, we can post it and treat it like a regular meeting. Because it's no longer a pandemic, we cannot hold an official virtual meeting. So we have a couple options. First of all, how many people were going to be able to be there on Saturday anyway? This might be a completely irrelevant issue.
I was counting.
I was thinking 50.
Okay, well then, there we go, there's our solution. So if there are two board members who are present, two board members can log on to the virtual session, not violate anything related to OMA and conduct the listening session. And then because it's virtual, it'll be recorded for you guys to be able to contribute later. Does that, that works?
Works.
Okay. The other option would have been that we would have been able to all come together in the boardroom, meet in person in the boardroom, but then also conduct it virtually for those who aren't able to attend in person. But since it's Saturday mornings and summer are hard. And so I was hoping that maybe like people who are on vacation can tune in from the beach. I don't know. It depends what you want to do. So that's what we'll do. Max and I will be the representatives for the board. At that meeting on Saturday, we'll log in through the link as normal and then the recording will be available.
Just to follow up on that, are we pumping out any, or can I say something about that meeting? Additional?
I think Joni will send out another Skyward update.
Yeah, we'll post that online key tomorrow, so that will.
When on Friday.
When on Friday. And the link is posted in the listening session section of the website.
Was link included on Friday when I went out?
Um, yes.
Because we had the discussion about it wasn't important for you. So yes.
Other questions on Saturday? All right, and then our final one in person will be Wednesday, July 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Seymour Community Building. And that will be in person, back to in-person conversation. Okay, we've had three so far of the five. And over those three sessions, I was kind of hoping we could talk through some big ideas or some themes so that we're not just continually rehatching what we heard, but really narrowing our focus instead of it just being, we heard this, we heard this, we heard this. Really focusing on what the big ideas are that people are saying in our community. So personally, I identified three. You'll notice in the board packet, there was also an application to be part of the Mohammed Music Fest. That would just entail us having a table there and having some information for people to get involved in the strategic planning process. That's one of the things that, one of the big themes was overall communication from the district and really getting our voices heard. And so you might have noticed that in the packet. And if everybody's okay with that, we'll go ahead and fill that out. Max has already committed to being there all weekend long, sunup to sundown. So we can just, we can just live in with our cupcakes and saying.
We can call up some information, but I wouldn't.
Yes, yes. So real quick, is everybody okay with doing?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, so if anyone, okay. Okay, so.
And people are walking through their flight.
I'll help you, I'll be there soon. Don't worry. We can set up shop.
Yeah, I will, will.
I've got a can.
We'll, we'll requisition the bulldog pant, I think.
Oh, that's a good idea.
On the commonwealth.
Better, yes.
Anybody who has ideas for materials will meet prior to that.
Are we, are we gonna do a dump take?
You're gonna work that hard, but.
There will be one there.
It's a long ride, Max.
Um, I'm gonna do that. So I chatted down three big themes. You, this is really just kind of a jumping off point. I intended to be a jumping off point, but one big theme that I've heard over and over in those last three sessions is a stronger partnership with the village of Mohammed, really with clarity on commercial growth and helping people understand why Mohammed is growing so much commercially and how that impacts tax revenues and their goals for commercial growth, the goals for the number of residents, which is going to then intern impact school needs. And then long-range planning for the village as a whole. Like what are they aiming, what's their, you know, goal number of, number of residents in Mohammed? Because that influences commercial growth because businesses want to come to places that are more highly populated. So that was one theme. A second theme I noticed was long-range planning and long-range conversations, particularly with regard to facilities and land purchases. People have been saying a lot that they don't want just a, give us, tell us what the next thing is. They want to know, okay, this is the next thing, but then step two and step three and step four down the road. And then the third theme that I noticed was overall communication. So how to get in touch with people who are not on social media? How to get in touch with people who maybe don't have kids in the district and don't have emails, utilizing newspapers, utilizing emails, utilizing in-person events? Maybe even having somebody to manage social media and support the district, somebody who can really take on communication as their job. Those three themes are really intended to kind of drive the strategic planning process. These conversations are intended to drive the strategic planning process. From that will draw out facilities ideas as well. Does anybody want to add or agree or disagree? I don't think those.
I think the conversations are pretty dominated by facilities, right?
Yeah.
I think there are a couple of reasons for that. One, it's by far the biggest issue we're facing. The two, you know, when you start to get away with facilities and into curriculum, maybe it starts to get a little more political and people are less confident to hear those grievances, I guess, I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I think, or maybe I should just say some thoughts for facilities brainstorm. If that's.
Yeah, yeah, for our next one, for our pros and cons.
Yep.
Is that what you wanted to do? Well, one of the themes that you mentioned was fiscal responsibility.
Yeah.
Really financially.
Yep, yeah, we have, we have a community that's very passionate about fiscal responsibility and making sure that what we spend money on is something that we actually need and that it's not overdone and that it's very functional as opposed to focused on, yeah, the form of things, yeah.
We've heard a lot about building locations, desire by some for proximity of building the central campus maybe area. That probably is encompassed in that second theme that you identified, long-range conversations on guard facilities and land purchases. And we're hearing, I find it interesting because some of the kind of conflicts, right? They want, we should move all buildings to a central spot. Well, we can't move all buildings to the central part of town because there's thousands, the streets have already been built and it's wide as they're going to be. Unless one, you know, it's wanting the village to take over people's front yard. You know, it's just not a really good way to do that. So that means we're, we do a central location, we're building buildings somewhere else. And then we, well, we can't move them all at once. So then during that time, during the 20 or 30 years or whatever it takes to do that, there's separation of buildings, you know? And so I would like to hear, I think, a little more from the community on that and get a feel for what people think is realistic and not realistic. I guess my takeaway from that, kind of make that, put some practicality to that, is that they feel we should be maybe moving towards a central location, right? We can't be there all at once. And I know, I don't know if you want to talk much about that now or you want to talk about thoughts there when we get to the next part.
Well, I was gonna say, that is one of our pros and cons conversations. So I, we can.
I'm gonna say another theme that I heard a lot was curriculum.
Okay, same old.
And it wasn't really super focused on like a specific thing with the curriculum other than making sure like kids, especially in the younger grades, that they're being challenged if they, you know, that they're not put into classroom with other kids that are lower than them. Am I making sense sometimes? Yeah. And that they're being challenged. If they're not, then try to figure that out.
So really individualizing education.
One thing that was pretty universally agreed on the last one was the technology in this room and broadcasting outs. So I don't know, I think it was a microphone conversation that we had or acoustics that were maybe difficult to hear. Well, I'm finding immediate.
Like during the meetings, like even though the microphones are there, the sound isn't always clear.
And those cameras used to move.
Yeah, the cameras used to move based on who was talking. So then I who was talking, wow, it didn't mix over.
I thought you were going to be, I mean, I.
Sure, yeah, I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of the conversations from the room, the mics from the room. I don't know, someone suggested we all have our microphone. I don't know, we need to do that, but we need to, we need to work on it through the summer. Whatever that entails. Adding mics, repositioning mics, I don't know what the answer is.
One thing I.
I think we have somebody that can maybe.
One thing I do think is coupled with as far as like with the video and the recording of it is being able to clip our listening session conversation. And I feel settled in facilities for internal conversations, clipping those and resharing those for people so they know like, hey, this is what's been discussed. Come share it with our leaders so that people, hopefully we can keep getting.
Anything else to add to that other than with two more sessions left? I'm really hoping we get a lot more people from the community to come out and voice their inputs. I know everyone's busy, but we've got lots of opportunities, lots of flexible opportunities. Leave next to virtual and the kind of late night one should hit a lot of those folks that couldn't make the previous ones or I'm hoping can make it.
All right, as a reminder, it's Saturday, 9 till 11 virtual session. The link is posted online. It will also go out through Skyward and Wednesday, July 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Okay, let's move on to our facilities brainstorm. Joni, will you set the timer for 15 minutes? Let's see how much we can get through in 15 minutes. This means we've already started talking about land purchases. Do we want to just keep going with the pros and cons on that one?
Sure.
Because I feel like we kind of started that. Max, with the future land purchases, we've got, what we need to think about is as a, as a board, as a school district, is this, are we aiming toward eventually having a campus concept where we have all of our buildings and facilities in one central location part of town? Or are we looking to have our schools spread out in order to spread out traffic and spread out people throughout the community and how we take advantage of the buildings we already own? So give me some pros and cons there. Or tell me what you like about one or not like about the other.
Well, the pro would be.
A pro of campus, I think?
A campus idea, yes. Any administrators in the room can help me out with this, but I would imagine it's a lot more efficient to like communicate, meet with one another, to centralize like from a safety standpoint, centralize like, you know, we have a resource, school resource officer, but he shared mom on the buildings. Well, the buildings were in one central location. You know, he can, he can easily get from place to place.
Same with the nurse.
Right, sharing facilities, you know, junior high kids may not have to walk to the high school for something. Well, they would, but it'd be right there. Not that it's very far now, but you get the idea between buildings. So I think from a efficiency, efficiency and sharing space and, and, and knowledge and meeting with one another, I think that's a pro. Cons, it'd be logistical nightmare to get to that point and extremely expensive, like Max said earlier.
Same on that.
Well, and you're drawing on.
Right.
To one.
To one place, yeah.
So you either got to build a lot of infrastructure before you can do anything or be in someplace where there's infrastructure.
Built.
Built, then going in and can modify and.
Can I pause you for a minute to kind of clarify? It would be expensive if we were going into a space that doesn't have a lot of the infrastructure. But the space that we have here has, like the land that we own across the street that has, this area has the infrastructure we need, right?
For two buildings.
For two buildings.
Then potentially, I think it's got a good base that we could do.
Potentially what?
Potentially to the battle. I mean, kind of like we're, we're not going down a winding stage.
So more expensive.
Taking people's front yards, right?
Yeah.
But out here, what's one in is good and more could easily be F. So it's, you know, if you went west or north, it'd be certain scratch.
What did you mean by logistical nightmare? What, what would be hard logistical?
Well, in the interim, do we use the existing buildings? Can't we use the existing buildings?
So you.
Traffic, I think.
Like planned for the interim type? Because like you said, we wouldn't be able to do a campus all at once.
Or, yeah, so yeah, interim planning, I guess.
Right. You've got to use existing buildings because you can't afford to do it all at once. Another thing, and then the other piece, the other, I don't know, it's a con, it's a question. As you move things to a central campus, what happens to existing buildings?
Exactly, yeah, to a couple of really good existing buildings, right? Like if you're gonna build a campus around this building, then that means you eventually get rid of the high school and it's not ready to be gotten rid of, yeah.
But if we're looking 40 years down the road?
Yeah, you're allocating a lot of money to secure that land than to sit on that for 40 years also.
So it might be more cost-effective to just find land that we can get at a good price?
I don't think there's a lot of that around.
I agree, but I'm just thinking, like, if developers around here are like, oh, they're gonna build a campus all around here, the prices of land around here will obviously go higher because they're gonna be like, oh, well, the buy, if we're, you know, and these, in building, buying land, those conversations are close session conversations. We obviously aren't going to talk about what land we're thinking about purchasing and what price that's not appropriate. But if we were to buy land someplace else, if somebody didn't realize, okay, we're thinking about putting a school there, we might get a better purchase price for that.
But then the amount we announce, the price of the surrounding land is gonna go. The people are gonna be there.
That's true. Yeah, I also shared your concern about once those other buildings are phased out and if they were to be moved to a separate location, then what happens to that?
Yep.
We've, we've all kind of heard the backlash of.
Yeah, the modest.
Yeah, previous, uh, buildings being sold and how that didn't go well. Maybe we learned from that and can take something into that or maybe that shifts the reality of that's what happens when you get to that point. I don't know.
We need a separate campus people and the people who are unhappy that we're still saying, they need to talk because those two things don't work.
Well.
I mean, the existing locations though are in a residential area versus the previous one was more like a downtown corridor. Those being the difference, differences in my view. Is there such thing as looking too far down the road to Kyle's point? You know, buying something now, buying land now to help us 50 years from now?
We'll never be.
Is it worth it to?
It won't come down.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be cheaper.
Is there any?
Right, but in the, in the short term, we kind of hamstring other things, ourselves for other things we do.
Justin and Mr. Keith, the last go-around conversations around land purchasing, did some research into, I'm doing a land study.
Yep.
And then we put that on hold because there was a lot of confusion around, what does that mean? Are we gonna be asking for more money to buy land now? And we need to build a junior high, but we already have land for a junior high. And so we were like, let's just hold on.
And we were gonna go right there.
Change, right. So in, from what you learned, Justin, can you refer to my memory? From what you learned, could we do, like, how long would it take to do a quick land study to see, you know, like what is even available to purchase? Because some, some land is already purchased, just not being developed yet. Like how, how long is that typically?
Or recommendations from, from somebody from a professional, where would you go?
Yeah, so if I remember correctly, I think we officially met with three land surveyors, for lack of a better word. Two of them being from Northern Illinois and one of them being Farnsworth Group, which is local. At the time, I remember saying that I felt like the Farnsworth Group would be the best choice of the three that we talked to because they were local. They have a, they have a relationship with the village. They know our community, they know our surrounding community. It seemed like a wise choice instead of bringing someone in from Northern Illinois. It seemed like a wise choice, instead of bringing someone in from Northern Illinois that had no idea what was going on up here. As far as how long it would take, basically, the people we talked to, they needed us to define exactly what we wanted them to look into. So, without going back through all the notes that we have, I would say it would probably take a couple of months, if I remember correctly, for them to kind of get the ball rolling and kind of figure out some basics for us. Price wise, I can't remember exactly what, what it is, but they needed us to define exactly what we wanted them.
Oh, that makes sense.
I think, I think they wanted more of a idea.
Yeah, like a defined scope of work.
Right. So, yeah, I think all those notes, I think I can find all those, and those are still available, so I'll look back through those and get some information.
Is that something that you guys would have an interest in hearing, from a professional, like, a group who might say, it'd be smart to look here?
I think, well, yes, short answer, yes, but as long as it's in the context of addressing our most immediate need, you know, bu- buying land could be a great thing, but I, I wanna know, how does it fix the capacity issues that we have right now? Because that's what's brought to mind to everybody, uh, and I'm all for a long-term plan. But if that long-term plan doesn't start with step one, A, more space at D Junior High or A Junior High, the Lincoln Trail, A Lincoln Trail, then to me, it's, uh, it's not that valuable.
I, I think there's two parts to it. I think there's the, we need space soon. We needed it already, part of the, of, of the plan. But then, I think we've got a fair number of folks in the community that, well, you know, there need, there needs to be more of a long-term look at things. And this may help us to maybe, kind of, add a little bit, and put that, I mean, I don't know, I, I would, I would kind of like to see Dr. Lee maybe reach out to Farnsworth and just get a, more of an idea, scope of what they could do and what, I'd say, turn around. I don't know, we'd make a firm decision on it tonight, but I think getting more information from that might be very helpful. Forty thousand dollars in, in two years, well, it doesn't help us much right now.
Is there, um, any land in Seymour? Did we ever have a school in Seymour, ever, ever?
Yes.
There's a lot of legends in there.
Huh?
There was a building in Seymour.
Oh, yeah.
It's still, it's still there, it's a manufacturing facility. When we bought this land.
I'm just running things.
Talk to you later. It's a good idea, link outside the box.
Yeah.
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 But, and that's why I actually want somebody who's not in the thick of it.
But.
To look at it and say, here's what I, here's what you should consider.
I'm not gonna break the gap between the, the different factions that vote for or against something, saying, this is our immediate need, this is what we're presenting, but also as a part of that package, we would like to allocate some funds to, to secure some land for the long, because you would hear that, like, you know, that, like you said, either we only are gonna do this, or we need to do something that's, you know, laid out for, forever.
Yeah.
But maybe if you combine those in some way, there's gotta be some balance of the two that might appeal to more people. A good question for future meetings would be, you know, i- if you voted no, or even if you're on the fence, what are some key, uh, components to a potential referendum or a solution? That would either tip you to the yes side, or even further to the yes side, to the point where they could advocate strongly for it. I don't know that we've phrased it that way before, to like, think of like some real quick hitters, okay? One, I wanna see this, two, I wanna see that. That may be a good idea for the next couple of meetings.
I feel like the big thing that we, for, for people was that they, um, didn't like the idea of the junior high being demolished, or not having a plan for the junior high, or they already question that we're giving away, um, so they didn't like that idea. And they, I, but the, the challenge is, you have people who are like, I want a new high school, turn the high school into a junior high, turn the junior high into a elementary, which is a huge amount of money, because we don't have land for that. But then you have, a- and then you have people on the other end of the spectrum who are saying, I, I don't wanna, I wanna spend as little as possible. So just put in some reportables and add on some classrooms and be done. And so, like, i- it's hard, because you have completely conflicting ideas. So, yeah, it'd be a good idea to ask that and see what we. Okay, we only have a minute and a half, so we're not gonna jump into any other ones. Are there any other pros and cons for campus versus spread out schools?
Real quick, I just wanna go back to the land survey thing, I think it would be beneficial to talk to somebody to give that outside perspective. Because sometimes they can bring us an outside perspective that we haven't thought of, so I, I think that'd be beneficial.
And, and what's our communication like with the village?
Um, we are actually gonna set up a joint meeting. Something gets some.
Yeah, we're looking at a lot of states.
When you say joint meeting, what do you mean?
Our board and their board, to have conversations around, here's what's coming out of the best, our strategic planning. They can share with all of us? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, they can share with us what, just their thinking as far as development and Tiff districts.
Awesome, we're looking at it. So, typically, in, in past, we've had one or two joint meetings a year where their board. The last year, we're having a lot of people. We typically also have regular meetings between their leadership and our leadership. Dr. Lee.
Like monthly?
Mon- yeah, monthly. I've been in those, I've just, where we participate in some of those. You will hear things that come out of those meetings. And, and the thing that came out of last meeting was, you know, we're here for the community, it's, and, and really from our board, it's more than pastime to have a meeting.
Awesome, I, I agree. Can you, so I'm hearing kind of a general consensus that people are on pay with Dr. Lee reaching out to Farnsworth and kind of getting a sense of timeline costs, maybe? Um, maybe you can kind of explain where we are in the process of what we're probably thinking of. Also, actually, I don't know, I, I think I'm hearing as well, one of the biggest concerns is what, if we do decide to do a campus idea, what would we do with the existing buildings? Do you, have you worked with school districts that that's happened to, where they have outgrown buildings, built new ones, what do they do with the other buildings?
Yeah, so.
Who is?
I, I still want to ensure.
Okay.
Previous position.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Good conversation. Okay, let's move on to the question twelve updates. Dr. Lee, this is our second reading, uh, do you wanna touch on?
Yeah, just a second reading, and then as I mentioned in the, uh, board bar, that, um, often times since we have a policy customization program, they do ask for the mandatory questions, and I just noted in here that uh, we would proceed with a no to question one, and not applicable to question two.
Questions about that, comments? Maybe a minute to pull that up in here.
One more time.
Press one twelve, um, any questions or comments about adopting it or changes?
Move to.
Pedro, let him know the P.
Yes.
It's, it's very technical.
Can you guys explain? So basically, this policy is about insufficient fund checks and debt recovery.
Yes, and the way that our current policy reads is that we would answer no to that question, because we have not, uh, adopted the, the LRDP policy language, meaning the, the local debt recovery program, through the Illinois Office of the Comptroller. So then, the NA at the bottom then goes along with, with answering no, because then you can see that the board did not adopt the policy language regarding the local debt recovery.
Then all of that green stuff would not be.
That's right, just, then it's just the leader.
Yeah, I just, I don't, um, quite understand what the local debt recovery program would do.
But I just didn't wonder if it got collected.
Like, if, but we're not.
Why would?
Why, why would we ever need it? Like, why do, why would schools need?
Get us a check, like.
Yeah. That would be, I was gonna say, we should differently, why would? Well, we, we need to answer this way, because this is, when we had initially adopted this policy, this is, we did not choose with the local debt recovery program. If we wanted me to go back and, and look for that, uh, and bring you options on adding that to policy, I'm happy to do so. But as we sit right now, we don't have that policy.
We're doing fine collecting our own.
Heather, what can you do for fine collecting if you need to, uh, overdo balances and things like that, send letters?
I was pretty successful.
They can be, um, and we just, we can't hold it, because of, uh, school, uh, we cannot hold it against a student for not paying, so like, we cannot withhold, you know, graduation or anything like that, so we just, we send you just send letters.
I assume it costs money to be part of the program? So it's not gonna make much of a difference?
Yeah, we just need it.
I would say that we answer the questions in a way that answers one.
That's my question, is it in the vast board?
We never decided that, sure, so we'll go back to that.
Other questions?
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve press one call update as presented, and I have a motion for that.
I'll second.
Uh, two more calls please.
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Adam Stern?
Severns?
Yes. Adam and Karen? Yes. All right, new business, this is about the after-school program with Stevens Family YMCA.
Yes, so last summer, uh, the district dissolved our after-school program and worked with Stevens Family YMCA to operate in our buildings at, uh, Middletown Prairie and at Lincoln Trail. Uh, we've been pleased with the product, um, they've done a, a nice job, um, they, they've done a, a great job of staffing. It's also not been a, near as much of a challenge of staffing for us that they have taken it over. And, uh, we met with Mr. Scott last week, Dr. Bagdianai, um, just for him to come in and ask us if we had any concerns, and, uh, just wanted to get some feedback from us, and they would like to continue doing so. Last year, uh, when we dissolved in June, uh, there wasn't a, a formal, um, agreement, uh, put into place, but this, this formalizes the agreement for another year. Uh, so we were pleased with the product, we're receiving it, we're rep, we continue, uh, working with Stevens Family on this. Stevens Family YMCA approved the proposal.
Does it flood Saturday?
We approved the proposal.
Does this look comparable, Dr. Lee, to last year?
I couldn't find it from last year, uh, neither could Mr. Scott, uh, that we have, we had a motion to dissolve, we were currently doing it, and you'll remember, we had Mr. Scott on uh, speakerphone, because he was on vacation, but as far as a formal document, I didn't, but that was before I got here too, so.
But, um, I guess my question is, but I'm raising rates, not changing.
And this money goes to the YMCA, does any of it go our?
No.
No.
I had a question about that also, so the previous program, we, we have revenue coming in from that that we no longer have, so.
We had, Heather, we, we had revenue from. Just tracks.
What we were, are you?
Yeah.
And how much was it?
Um, twenty-five million.
But it was a real, the problem was, it was a real staffing issue. It was a nightmare.
So, so my.
My kids.
I'm not talking about revenue, what, what was the problem?
Let me run it.
So, what I'm, what I'm seeing, and I'm not saying this is a bad, it sounds like it's, it's filling a need, but we're letting our facilities get used and wear and tear, and then we're not receiving anything back at all for, for the use of that. I know we're a public school, and like, that's part of it.
Sure, and that's, so, so if we wanna talk about that globally, I'm happy to do so, but, but think of all of the, because that's been happening for years, right, so we've got athletic clubs that are using our facilities that are paying, and, and then this is a service for our students. So I'm happy to, to come back and, and, you know, we can come up with rates for electricity and, and custodian and all of that, we just haven't done that as an organization for.
I think, I think that what the piece of off missing was not being part of the previous program.
Yeah.
Having like a good grasp of it.
Sure, sure, we, you know, we had our own program for years, we ran, and, and the feeling was it was important to provide after-school care for kids, right? Buy parents with options, and it just became the point where it was a possible front program. We'd have several, we would have more than one considering the year of issues, uh, staffing was a huge issue, supervision was a big issue. I would say that at times, we probably had people administratively that felt maybe we weren't certainly providing the best experience for kids, and at times, maybe there were concerns for safety just because of understaffing. And so, this became the option, um, to still be able to provide parents with an after-school option. And actually, I think the reviews have been pretty good, parents seemed to be very pleased with the product. We were not pleased in the end with our product at all, as far as level of care, parents like this, it's, it was more money for parents, yet it is still sold out, I think that tells you that parents see value in it and appreciate it, so. And the Stevens Family YMCA does also offer scholarships, if parents are interested.
One of the main concerns prior to switching over is that there wasn't anybody in our district who was directly over the after-school program. It fell under Dr. Rummel, and it fell under classroom teachers or other educators in the district, whether they be in a register or whatever. So what was happening is that if there was a situation happening in a classroom, but they needed to be down in the cafeteria or something, they were basically, it, it, it was almost like this conflict between, you know, having this educator job versus having this kids plus, or kids club.
Kids club.
Kids club, um, having this kids club role, I have to go and, and manage this and make sure all the games are out and all of this, and that it was also taking away from the responsibilities of Dr. Rummel, which was already, her, her responsibilities were already kind of stepping up pretty high. And so, it became this situation where if, if we're not gonna be able to just hire basically our own people to oversee it, the next best thing is really to give it to people who know how, so that's kind of where that.
And they do this.
Yeah, others to the roles, there's to do, yeah, yeah. So, that, Heather, are you still calculating, uh, just the ones, sorry. Good question.
If I remember right, well, we made.
Two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
I was gonna say two hundred thousands, what's stuck in my head, and I know we ended up making more than that the last we did it, only because we couldn't staff it, so we weren't. We had no payroll expense, that's not fair, we didn't have the payroll expense we should have had. And we didn't have a level of safety for kids that we should have had. How many students were involved in it? I think the number's about the same.
I feel like, you know, if it's captain in either building, I wanna say like sixty or eighty, I think sometimes we went a little bit over that, but we, I mean, it's just really possible to staff.
But it, it just came to the point, so you can't do this. It's really where it came down to.
Is it something you want to explore further as far as like hiring the director or hiring your own?
I don't know. So, yeah, just digging into a little more, I mean, two hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then I feel like you could hire a full-time position and pay people more money to do it and still probably come out net positive. I don't know if it's worth all the trouble to manage that. Everyone's reaction in the room, that's, that's a big undertaking, but it just, I mean, it just seems like that there's a lot of money that's, that, this, and YMCA, I mean, they're great.
Yeah, they are.
They're off.
You know, it's, it's July. I would say we approve the YMCA for next year. If it's something that we really want to look at, then just take a year and look at it.
Well, that was gonna be my recommendation.
Yeah, but let's not try to look at it.
Oh, gosh, no, that's not, I'm just thinking, if there's interest in figuring out what it would take for us to run our own program like this, this is a one-year agreement. There's, there's nothing wrong with having conversations and discussions about what would.
It sounds like the board are, yeah. So I don't want to beat it at worst, you know, I'm not being privy to that, but just raise my eyebrow on a few things, so.
Other than, are there behavior issues ever with the YMCA? Like, how do we handle those?
They, we have received big balls.
That's a big plus because kids club was not, I felt like it was really.
Kids was a behavior.
We read by and I'd teach kids.
I can tell you just from working in this building, like, you don't even know that they're inherently one of the.
That's awesome.
Plus, they're very well behaved and.
Yeah, and so to me, right there, that's priceless. Yeah. Because that, that means the kids are happy.
And I don't, and I don't want to badmouth our people with all of that in any way. There was some good people involved in that, but they were overwhelmed just from a numbers standpoint because we weren't staffed and it was out of control. Not, not, not the fault of the loyal people who were with us to the end now.
Agreed.
That's just the way it was.
Um, okay, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Stevens Family YMCA for after-school program as presented.
Someone who's.
That's good, thank you, it's okay.
Second.
Uh, two more calls please. Jordan.
Yes.
Kong.
Yes.
Anister.
Severns.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
McKernan.
Yes.
Um, okay, social media litigation, after we will have a seat conversation with us at office.
Yes, as I included in here, in working with our, our law firm, Franzic, they just threw out to all of their clients, to the boards of education, if, if you were interested in reading through the article and just that, as a result of some of our lists, some of the topics of listening sessions, wealth mainstream media, there's been a feeling that social media platforms are affecting our students in a negative manner. And there's the, the, the main law firm in this case is from California. And a few years ago, they filed suit on behalf of students with regard to a, a manufacturer of vapes, that company, and then that's how they built the relationship with Franzic, who is one of our, our law firms. So they are currently putting together this, and Franzic just wanted me to engage interest in the Board of Education. If you guys are interested in this, I can bring it back to you next month. If you're not, shred it and move on. But I felt like it was, it was worthy of a conversation.
And to clarify, we are not giving any money out?
No, there's, there's no expense to it, just for, for the sake of ease. If for some reason the district didn't participate and there was a settlement and our portion was a hundred thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars of that goes to the law firm that is, is in charge of the, the case. And then twenty-five percent of that twenty-five thousand dollars goes to Franzic for, for, for their clients who they've shared it with in Illinois.
And it's the money that we, so let's say we receive a settlement. Do we have to use that money in a certain way? Is it earmarked towards student mental health in order to?
Not that I'm aware of.
That would be a good place to have it, Frank. There was a video, I don't know, say forty minutes video on this that I watched from one of the law firms, like, it was really recorded. I'll have to see if I can find it.
Yeah, that'd be great, so.
I asked Dr. Lee some questions about this. I found an article that said that only sixteen school districts were party to that claim. It's much more now, about six hundred, so it's not like.
Six hundred school districts?
Yeah, so they're nationwide.
Right, now currently, that they're aware of in Illinois, Franzic, there are sixteen. They envision that because there are boards that are still considering it. They envision that being somewhere between twenty and forty, that he said, but you're right. But Mr., Mr. Crowley said around six hundred nationwide.
You know, I, I think we've heard from our community in listening sessions that social media is a concern they have with their kids. We know, if, if you need it, it talks about some of the work or some of the, that concerns about mental health for kids, particularly with depression and suicide and key on some of those areas. We know social media is capable of skewing their message. We know. And I, I use social media. I use it professionally. I use it in my personal life. I'm also an adult. Filters that stuff. And I also, as an adult, the last time I was here, social media skewed what they send to adults. You know, I'm pretty clear. So I think, I think this is an important issue. I think they do skew subs, so it's good if they're five percent of everyone's to want to present. And I, with the gate, I would be in favor of us younger parents.
Andrew, you have any?
Are there, are there any names, what else?
Since what you're saying.
I mean, I don't know, it's, I don't know, it's. As Dr. Lee would like this, it's gonna be like Muhammad Seymour versus Facebook or TikTok, you know. But if there's a lot of school districts involved, the spotlight's not on us, does. And I know we have a relationship with Google, like with the classrooms and the books, and.
That was one of the things.
Anything about that.
Probably, how does this impact our use of these tools in an educational way? Should we receive a settlement from this? Now, I don't know that teachers are using Facebook in an educational way in the classroom, but let's say, you know, they want to show a YouTube video, or YouTube's not included in this, but.
But was it, was it, it wasn't just Facebook?
No, it's not. It was TikTok, Snapchat.
I think Instagram, which was on.
Instagram.
Instagram's on my panel, it's.
Um, but Dr. Lee definitely think it will tie our hands.
No, no, they, I, I checked into that with, with.
Even if it does.
I, I didn't, I'm going back for.
It's interesting.
I think one thing that she has a meat scene, that social media is horrible. Horrible.
Okay, sounds like there's some.
Yeah, I'm sure even if we win Google and Facebook and the like will continue to accept our money. Should we, should we continue to?
Though, though, it's fine, we just.
I would say that if, or put forward that if we do see anything out of this, that we put that into guidance counselors or, or some kind of.
Or, or.
Something like that. Social workers, something like that. Something that helps.
Cyberbullying, cyberbullying is a real.
Cyberbullying.
Definitely where, kind of passive, low-key.
For action, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we know we don't have the kind of mental health staff and numbers that we need to have. This would be great.
Thanks for. Yes. Um, okay, we, next item of business, policy review and possible revisions. There are a few policies that we wanted to take a look at tonight. Dr. Lee, do you want to go policy by policy?
If that's okay, I'll make a quick. So policy two twenty, as you can see, outlines the powers and duties of the school board with regard to indemnification. On, we, we've added one, which is number twenty-two, that authorizes an exception to any board policy for an individual, provided the exceptions allowed by law. An explanation of the exception, as well as the board's rationale for granting the exception, shall be included in the meeting. And it's the identity, the identity of the individual may be kept private discretion of the board. And again, that's maybe, so I don't have any concerns with that. But I think that what, what I'd like for you to consider is that if, if you're going to start making exceptions for individuals at the board level, that could really open yourselves up to, to criticism and discrimination and things like that. And if, if a policy is bad policy or doesn't work for our district, then we need to change the policy as opposed to making exceptions for individuals that come before the board.
I agree with that.
Meaning board members themselves, correct, or is that individuals, meaning?
They were not individuals, so, but, you know, that they would come in and start not following policy for some and following it for others. I think that we could certainly change policy, real life policy.
And, and, and another man who's kind of he does it too, is we can certainly, we can grant exceptions if we want to grant exceptions. And this basically just codifies that. But to Dr. Lee's point, if we're granting a lot of exceptions, why?
It's part of the policy. Any, wait, before you, any questions?
Okay, policy two colon five two says that former board members be seated with the board and participate in graduation commencement ceremony. Certainly, I think that it's wonderful that you guys have added this policy that codifies that former board members get to give their students their diplomas. But we don't, that's not our practice as far as sitting up on the stage and participating in the ceremony. We have a practice that we have in place where parents come up and do that. So I would just align the policy with our practice.
I agree. That was kind of created as we were getting into this.
Sure.
I like.
Yeah, it's, it's. Policy six colon four zero and six colon two one zero, I'll just kind of package together if, if that's okay. We have added in there a few years.
One more.
Yes, a minimum of twenty-one days. I think that with our meeting structure, that if you guys wanted to have a discussion about something and with, with, with our different study sessions and, and the meetings and the way that they fall, that you guys would have plenty of time in between if you wanted to, to move something along instead of hamstringing you with these twenty-one days. So I would just suggest you take that.
My concern with the twenty-one days, I was gonna ask.
Well, I was just gonna say, sometimes we have some deadline issues in the twenty-one days. It's.
Certainly, I can try to stabilize.
You gotta, you gotta hit order, either order deadline.
Right.
Or I think what you were gonna say, I'll let you say.
Uh, I think it's important that we, that we still are having curriculum displayed before we have a vote. So that's, that's not taking any of that out of it. I just know that there is, that there are certain timeframes, like if you're on a grant timeline or if you're on professional development and you can get, for example, in my district, this actually happened, where we were getting new reading curriculum, Dr. and we wanted to get some training on it before the end of the school year, but there was a time limit of how long that curriculum needed to be displayed. Well, in order to do training on it, it needs to be approved, but, or, well, if that timeframe overlaps, then your teachers aren't going to be trained on it. So having that exact number of days, I think ties our hands. Whereas just saying we are going to make sure that we discuss it, display it, and then vote on it, I think opens up, it, it kind of covers all of our, our bases. We still display, we still have conversations about it. We aren't voting on any curriculum changes that immediately gets presented. It's just that twenty-one days.
Questions on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so the, the final one, seven colon four zero, I just wanted to make sure that you, as a board, were aware of the differences of what the Association of School Boards recommends and what we currently have in here. If, if the board is okay with leaving it, I would recommend that we just go ahead and, and leave it because it currently says that non-athletic extracurricular activities, provided the student attends a district school for at least one course during the regular school term, excluding lunch, that aligns with what the IHSA has just changed some of their bylaws. So if, if students are in extracurriculars and it just says that, excuse me, athletics, it says that they have to follow the IHSA guidelines. So non-athletic extracurricular activities, what we do, what our current practices aligns with what the IHSA is. So it's pretty clean that way and everything's the same. If you're okay with, with that. The other option.
Homeschool.
Yes, and then the, because that is our current policy, is that we allow non-public school students to eligible to participate in, in our athletics.
Provided they take one course.
What is it for athletic?
Extracurricular.
They take one course.
Yes, yes. But it, what it is, it's, it's, the way our policy is written, it's, it's not necessarily one course. It's what the IHSA says, which right now is one course, yes, so.
For like non-athletic, it's half of a regular? That's what we're wanting to change it to?
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting to change it. I'm just wanting to make sure that you guys are still okay with what we currently have because it is a little bit different from what is normally recommended. I would recommend just leaving it alone because then it's the same for IHSA and non-athletic right now.
The red language is what is typically put in for policy according to school, IASB. But it would make sense to keep our athletic and our non-athletic extracurricular requirements the same for homeschool students.
I guess I was under the impression that even if you were homeschooled and say you were on the basketball team, you didn't need to take any courses at all at our school, but you do have to sign up for a class.
Yeah.
Interesting.
There's also some reporting.
How much will it be?
Right, grades, yeah. So we have, Dr. Lee, you said one cheerleader and one track athlete.
Yeah, I heard that, two, two better exercising.
Okay. Do you know if changing it to a half of a regular school day would prohibit them?
Although, those are.
Those are.
Right, so.
This would only be non.
Oh, so the IHSA was, yeah, got it, okay, thank you. So we have none in the non-athletic category then, okay.
I don't, current, we have had before. I think we have somebody in. Wasn't he or something?
Yeah, we, we have had non.
We've had. Can recall for sure. Um, I like the idea of being consistent with what we require for athletics. So it makes it easy.
Um, all right, item number four, roll up application for membership into a large district unit association. Something, did I skip something?
No, I think, never mind.
Okay. No, you're good. There we go.
I've mentioned that I've been to a couple of meetings already, just preliminarily with the large unit district association as far as, as membership, as, you know, the, the cusp or the threshold for generally, membership is thirty-five hundred students and we're really knocking on the door of thirty-five hundred students. If we're not going to be there during this registration, and that's not our fast. So I have met a couple of times with the executive director of the organization, who's a former large unit district superintendent. And they've offered various forms of, of professional development. They offer professional development for not only myself, if we join, but for Dr. Bagby and Ms. Smith and Mrs. Northrop as well, whether it be cohorts that are online or also two conferences a year as well. And you can see it here that the, the first year is fifty percent off if we, we choose to join. So we would like to, to join for a year. As we continue to grow fast or swiftly, as we continue to do that, I think that it's important that we continue to, to talk to other districts that one, have experienced that, or two, that continue to, to grow. Because as we evaluate just our simple policies and procedures as we continue to grow, I think that it makes sense to be able to have that. You know, for instance, the, the other thing is, is that when I talked to the executive director last week is that, you know, it's a group of about fifty-five super tenants. He, he knows what everybody's kind of been through. So if, you know, we want information on social media litigation, he can help me just talk about that because he's, he'll make a site visit and then he's really got his pulse. because he's, he'll make a site visit and then he's really got his pulse. You know, as as the Association of School Administrators, the superintendent organization that that we also belong to, um, that's that's eight hundred. So, um, I think that this really is is tailored to to our needs. And if it's not, um, we won't come back for for joining again. But, um, I know that Dr. Bagby has experience as a member of Luda, as well as Ms. Smith, um, in former positions. And and they spoke very highly of the organization, uh, when they found out that I was planning to. So we are recommending that we go ahead and apply for it.
So we're not currently in part of like small unit.
Right.
No, I mean, that's, does that exist?
Well, um, there is a rural, um, the Illinois Association of like rural super- superintendents. There's, that's a small organization, um, that, um, they did, they they got together and did some studies, uh, a few years ago that I'm not familiar with, if there is one, mainly that's to the IASB. The the other organization, though, that I've been a part of in in the past was when I was a high school district. We're members of the Illinois High School District Organization. Because, um, that's that's a whole different lobbying structure as well. So not only was there professional development just for high school districts, but then also, um, they're trying to get legislation passed and things like that, um, too. So, uh, Luda has a voice in in Springfield as well, just for larger districts.
Okay.
So what, if you could go back, what was, what is the name of the organization here currently? Or the the district is currently?
Well, so so the board is a member of the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Right.
And then I'm also a member of the Illinois Association of School Administrators. That's our school superintendent. Yes.
But the district as a whole, like for something like this, we don't have something like this.
Right, right, and.
That is kind of.
Right.
Some dish.
Yes, this is an addition, yes.
Additional, I didn't know we would be dropping one.
No, we add, yes.
Okay, so this is an action I got. Going into it. Or we do a motion, is there any more discussion? Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approves a large unit district association membership as presented. Cost for fiscal year twenty-four is half price, which is an expense of two thousand one hundred dollars. Can I get a motion for that? Thank you, and I get second. Uh, let's do a voiceover. Lamb.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Severance.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Bannister. Yes. Uh, item five, all this, therapy services contract.
Yes, this is very similar to the occupational therapy services contract that we brought to you last month as we continue to to clean those up. Um, that it it's important, um, that when we bring these to you, and we'll have one more for our certified occupational therapy assistants, we think. Um, but it's important that we bring these and they're not a a part of the personnel because these are brand new contracts, as I explained last month. Um, eventually, what we'll do is when we come, the contract renewals for our EOPs in the office that aren't in the union as well, as our our tech people and things like that, we'll bring those all to you once in March. But we want separate, um, items since since these are are brand new to you, right?
Since it's a cleanup effort.
Yes.
Questions on the, you have it in your.
So again, I have an employee, just a new employee.
No, this is an employee, actually, because, um, Dr. Rose retired a year ago.
Oh, that's, yeah.
I was excited to see her. I I know of her and she's awesome.
Great.
Yeah. It's very exciting.
It's a great hire.
Very hired, yep.
Good job, Mrs. Northrup.
Way to go.
Take all of it.
It's like your two for two tonight.
You cast long enough, you roll something.
Only means you have.
She got in charge of our new bus drivers.
The, so stop working. Just continue to. Um, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve this full therapy service contract and Rebecca Sturm, as presented. Can I get a motion?
Salute.
Just a, wait a second.
A second.
Okay, seconded. Um, and roll call please. Cole.
Absolutely, I'm enthusiastic.
Severance.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Bannister.
Jordan. Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
McMar.
Yes.
All right, item six, approval of resolution for transfers to working cash fund.
As you all know, um, the very funding for us is our property taxes. And the way that Champagne Tony currently does it, we only get half in the beginning and half at the end, um, from two different levy periods, which is a little different, but it is what it is. Because of that, you'll see our cash go up at the beginning of the year, you know, as we collect that money. And but then throughout the middle to the end, you'll start see it starting to go down until we get that May and June payment. So as it goes down, um, because we, uh, currently don't have the reserves to cover that because we're only sixty, you know, four percent funded, um, we, uh, have to, we go negative in some of the accounts. We have deficits. Usually the bond, a lot of it, some of it's timing as well, like with the bond payments. Um, so other, otherwise it's O and M, which you you know, will be the next topic. And then transportation this year, um, we may have it as well, but it's supposed to be for a rate. But anyways, so throughout the year, and even though I don't physically do a temporary term, like I don't show it to actually transfer from one fund to the other fund. If I don't pass this, then I'm doing basically, as you call it, I guess, a legal transfers without having this passed. The only reason I don't, um, actually do them is because I want you guys to see what's actually in the funds and not mask it.
They allow it to be.
Yes, every period.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the resolution for transfers of funds from the working cash fund to other funds listed as needed. Can I get a motion for that?
Salute.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, let's do roll call please. Bannister. Rock.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Severance.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mar.
Yes.
All right, Heather. Resolution for the abatement of working cash funds permanent transfers.
Yes. And I had the question, we need to do these regularly, and yes, we have. I've looked back and they have been done in the past in education, O and M, and in transportation. This year, I'm asking for them to be done, and they're only done if they're necessary. Um, so this is just doing it basically like precautionary. I know we're gonna end up doing it in O and M just because we do not have the revenue to cover all of our maintenance and repairs on a regular basis. Um, but, uh, transportation is totally precautionary just because our, we're supposed to be forated this year. Um, even more on our transportation, so I just don't wanna take the chance of us, um, having a deficit in that account because of that foration. O and M, I I really, uh, my goal is to start diverting some of the revenue from other sources. And this year, I was going to actually put some revenue for corporate replacement taxes, but then Dr. Lee forwarded me some information that says that we are actually, what you possibly lose about three hundred thousand corporate replacement taxes this year. So obviously, that will have to hold off for at least another year or so.
What is corporate replacement tax?
Corporate property.
Sorry, yes.
So there, like, for instance, um, if there used to be, uh, different corporate offices in the state. Uh, am I, is that not what you put in?
They they used to be able to levy for the actual property in, everything inside of it. And when that went away, um, they just had like a whole harmless. And so you continue to get money through this instead of the the levy.
I got a good one.
Please.
Corporate replacement taxes is. One reason why mine sells is, yeah, we're gonna proceed the, what was it? The telephone companies corporate, yeah, let's just say that. And when people wonder like, you know, you spend ninety thousand per student, they spend like fourteen thousand per student.
Cause they're getting brand new.
That's one, one, one of the windfalls they had, or one of, one of the things they've had that helped them is corporate. We don't get near as much as.
All right, superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution for the abatement of working cash fund permanent transfers as presented. Motion to do that. The motion to Jordan and.
Sure, sorry.
Second to Mr. Cole. Uh, and roll call please. Severance.
Yes.
Bannister. Rock.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
McMar.
Yes. And item eight, approval of insurance. Tonight, we have the renewal for all of our liability insurance, our insurance. We had several categories. Um, and it is eleven point eight one percent increase. But that is coming in after a decrease of four point six five percent last year. There's many contributors to that, the market conditions. I I've heard that health insurance is going up by seven to eight percent. So obviously, that has changed in the last year. Um, but also, um, our loss ratio was higher, so we had more claims than we than we have in the past. Um, our property values went up. We had a new appraisal done. Um, basically, we did that for ourselves, like if something was to happen to our building. Since the values have gone up so much, we wanted to make sure that we got the full value, um, in insurance. So our property values did go up with that appraisal, that new appraisal. And then, um, also with just more people with the work. So it just continued, you know, so other, those, with those factors in mind, everything did go up, um, eleven percent. We we are wanting to accept the alternative, though, um, that they, cause Hushu recommended, um, basically the same, uh, carriers as we had before, but then also offered an alternative, uh, with Tokyo Marine, um, for our life, cyber liability. They're have, giving the same coverage, but just for a little bit less. Um, that is part of that eleven point eight one percent increase. So a total increase of thirty thousand eight seventy-one that will be coming out of tour.
We're spending lots of insurance.
Questions? Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the alternative insurance bid. Some.
Second.
Need insurance.
Yep. Before we vote, I would abstain, um, only, you know, ninety days or so ago, I got put on.
Part one.
I have a point of clarification. So this ad presented, we're going with the Tokyo Marine, which is the five thousand fifty-one. Two or actually.
Right.
Yes.
Roll call. Rock.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Cole.
Oops.
Jordan.
Yes.
Bannister.
Severance. Yes.
McMar. Yes. Um, at this time, a close session is necessary tonight for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve in independent contractors in a park or residential or institutional setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, and can hear testimony on a complaint lodge against an employee. A specific individual serves as an independent contractor in a park or residential or institutional setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. If there are any other reasons, we need to go into a close session. Okay, so roll call, uh, roll call to go into a close session if needed at this time. Can I have a motion to go to close session?
Salute.
A second.
Second.
Maybe more than John. Jordan.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Bannister. Severance.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
And McMar. Yes, uh, we do not anticipate any business following close sessions, so you are welcome to enjoy your evening.